Okay, it's 6:02. Sorry, we're starting a few minutes late. I'm going to call to order the committee of the whole for December 5th, 2019. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Meyerino. Mrs. Melendi. Mr. Gentry. Mr. Troy. Mr. Garren. Mr. Fleck. Mr. Quagliano.
Okay, we do have a quorum, so we can go forward. Mr. Ittingz, if you can come forward, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to be here. I have some lege leopard friends here that are going to help us lead in the pledge. I'm going to let them introduce themselves.
Brody Mertz, 4th grade.
Andrew Padgett, 4th grade.
Jeffrey Blom, 4th grade, 5th grade.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, to liberty and justice for all.
That green light on your microphone means that it's on.
Well, hi, guys, and gals. Thanks for coming, and you are by far the best dressed group that led us in the pledge all year. So, nice job. There we go. I'm going to ask you, and feel free if you want to answer, fine, if you don't, that's okay, too, but how did you end up leading us in the pledge today? Do you know?
We put our name on our Leo buck and put it in a bin, and then our principal picked a name out.
Really? Okay. So you all used your Leo bucks to do this?
Yes.
Nice job. Nice job. Okay, so we're getting pretty close to a major holiday, right? Which one is it?
Christmas.
Okay, that one, I knew you...
Or Hanukkah.
Or Hanukkah, there. Very good. Or Festivus. So, okay. Are you guys ready for winter break?
Yes. Yes.
What are you guys doing over winter break?
I'm going to Florida.
Nice.
I sometimes go to my grandpa's, and we do some other stuff.
Very exciting.
Have a wonderful time with my family that I love.
Oh, good.
He's going to Florida.
Okay. Nice. Well, very good. I want to thank you guys for leading us again. We're going to come up behind you and take some pictures, so stay right there.
Yeah, why don't you hop up on your knees so that you're a little taller for the picture? There you go. Good job. Can we see this friend right here? Okay. Can you see me and Melissa?
Next item on the agenda is public comment per policy 2-230. Mr. Armstrong, is there any public comment?
No, sir.
All right, for being none, we'll move on to revision and adoption of the agenda. Looks like we have some policy committee items. Curriculum, human resources, I'm sorry. What did I miss? Oh, number three. I skipped right over that. I'm very, very sorry. Let's go back to number three, student recognition by the Board of Education. Okay. Oh, Mr. Bealan, come on up.
I was getting ready to say, wait, and they're looking at me. I am actually standing in for Mr. Wilson, our athletic director, who is at the high school. We have a home opener for wrestling, so he is there today, so I'm representing him. I'd like to bring up Coach Matt Kaplan to introduce Ian and his family and talk about his accomplishments. But as I bring Mr. Kaplan up, I really want to talk specifically about his coaching staff and his team, and the ability to be able to take our team down to state to represent Huntley High School, and just some of the great remarks and words from other coaches, being from central Illinois and having other coaches who have been there from other schools. They spoke very highly of how Huntley High School has represented our district under the leadership of Mr. Kaplan and his coaching staff. So, thank you for representing us well, and I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, everybody. I just thank you to the board for having us here tonight. I'm, I want to thank Mr. Bealan again for being here tonight. I'm here to recognize Senior Ian Geisler. Just want to recognize his accomplishments this year and over the four years as a member of the Huntley Cross Country Program. This past season, Ian, as a senior, had probably as good and as accomplished a season as any individual person could hope for. Just about, I think, almost four weeks ago, almost four weeks ago, he was at the state meet, and he finished fourth in the Class 3A Boys Race, which is the highest placing individual finish by a runner from Huntley High School, also the top finish by a runner from this area. And so I want to congratulate him on that. I also, I'm sorry, I want to recognize his families here tonight, want to thank them for their four years of support, and we look forward to his spring track season. And along with all the list of accolades that this young man has brought upon our team and our program and himself, in the classroom, in the high school, he has an outstanding academic record. He loves to learn, and he performs so well in his classes. I'm very proud of him as a student and as an athlete. Next year, he will be attending the University of Iowa, where he will be not only going to school, but also getting to compete at the Division One level for cross-country and track and field. So, really excited for that next, that next chapter of his life. Just looking out in the board faces, Mr. Altmeier and Dr. Rowe have gotten to witness Ian competing over these last four years, I know for sure. And as a, as a member of this district and as a coach, Ian exemplifies everything that we hope for with our kids, and I've just appreciated the four years getting to work with him, and he really does represent the best that we have for our students and for our athletes. So I want to congratulate him again, and he's going to be missed. But congratulations, Ian, and if I may, present you to the board.
Now I was getting ahead of myself, so I will go back. Still no public file, public comment, right?
That is correct.
Okay, good. Revision and adoption of the agenda. It looks like everything has an item on it. We do have legislative. Is there anybody that needs to revise or adopt the agenda? If not, I will make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Second from Ms. Melendi, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Moving on, let's start with the policy committee. Mrs. Meyerino, shive line, it's all yours.
This is an existing policy that's just been updated, a couple changes that was going to be coming through next, next month, anyway, with some policy reviews. However, with the bullying policy here that we have, it also talks about harassment. Every two years at a minimum, this policy needs to be reviewed. The last time it was reviewed and update was, updated was in January of 2018, and so it will be one of those components that we do review these on a regular basis, but also are making sure that we're covering, meeting the expectations of the law in there. So a couple of the changes that came through, press was recommending some updated footnotes. We also wanted to make sure that we were updating names of our contacts for public or students to reach out if there were any situations going on, so added and changed some titles for that component, as well as, if you recall in the handbook last year, we made some updates in components of when you're looking at bullying, can't be bullied, marital status, gender, all those things, and one of the components in there was immigration status, so you'll see that that has been added into there. So, those are the changes that are going to be in there. One of the other things that will be coming forward, even though we're recommending that this be updated and approved now, we have a tip-to-text line that is going to be changing. Soon we'll be talking about a recommendation for that, coming here within probably the next month or two on changes with that. And as part of that, that's one component, we're going to do a district-wide just review of our processes and procedures in, in terms of bullying reports, making sure that we are meeting the needs of all of our students, and making sure everything is in line. The policy probably won't change those requirements that we have to have in there, but making sure that we are addressing those, looking at not only how do students report things, but how are we handling those if there are issues, components like that. And a lot of times we get our reports that maybe aren't necessarily bullying, per se, when you're reading the letter of the law. However, those aren't things that we just ignore, those are things that need to be handled as well. And so those will all be things that we'll be talking about with our review as we're
Yes, the next item is actually is a new policy, and it's, it's a, out of resulting from the Terrorism Task Force that was put together in the state of Illinois, and it's a recommendation that we, that we adopt. It's not a, it's not a requirement. However, everything that exists in the policy that is outlined currently exists in the school district, we have all of the active committees and reviews led by Mr. Dean already in progress. We meet the highest level of standard that the Illinois Task Force for Terrorism is recommending that we adopt because of that, and that the, the policy just confirms the high standards that we've already had in place for safety. We felt it necessary to go ahead and take their recommendation and, and put this into a formal policy for your first reading. Mr. Dean is available if you have any specific questions about anything in the policy.
Okay. Okay. Before we do that, is everybody okay with moving any of this forward? Okay. Very good. So, Mr. Garren is not here, Mr. Gentry is not here. Mr. Troy, you're a committee of one. Committee of one? Always fun. As such, our committee's not going to be passing anything, so that'll just go to the general board at the next meeting. Dr. Schlichter, I'd still like you to follow through on what's on the agenda, just what's presented, at least.
Absolutely. So, with our Vanguard Vision competency-based program at the high school, we have been having, actually for this whole school year, some consulting assistance from a group called Education Elements. They're a national group, probably the premier national group supporting personalized and competency-based education in the country. Great contacts, great expertise. They've been doing onsite visits as well as virtual visits with us to help us with excellence and improvement in that program, especially as it scales. And so, our contract with them actually is up here in December for a limited term of services that we contracted. We have been able to reallocate some Title I funds to be able to extend that contract with the same type of services through the end of the school year, in order to, in the summer, in order to really plan for that third year of Vanguard Vision. And I think just in terms of the undertaking and the benefit students are getting, as well as looking at just what it takes to really get teachers, you know, up to scale, moving it forward, planning the curriculum, and then the instructional practices at Elements has really been of invaluable assistance. And so, what we would like to do is just to extend that contract, and you see, it's $20,000, again, fully paid by Title I funds, which are for the purpose of improvement. And Huntley High School is a building where those funds are able to be allocated, so we think it's a great use of those funds. So like we said, that would not be brought forward by the committee, but that would be brought forward to the board at our next meeting.
Thank you. Any questions from the board in general? Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, we'll move on to number eight, human resources. Either Ms. Melendi or Mr. Quagliano.
Thanks. Okay, human resources, eight dot one. Mr. Zarek, do you have anything to add?
Just a quick update there on the memo. Completed open enrollment in November for our employees. New insurance will take effect on January 1, and our office is also busy completing some annual reports that are due at the beginning of next year.
Any questions? Okay. We'll move that forward and go on to finance.
Now, Mr. Quagliano.
That's why I deferred. Okay, Finance Committee, nine dot one, revenue expenditure report, Mr. Altmeier.
Thank you very much. In front of you, you do have the October 2019 Financial Executive Summary for the four months ended. We continue to track, track with budget on the revenue side. There's, there's absolutely no issues on the revenue side that we foresee, so everything's looking good there. Even on the expenditure side, we're looking good, with the exception of health insurance. We had a pretty bad month in the month of October, unfortunately. Health insurance claims came in at $812,000, and that is net of $140,000 stop-loss credit that came back. So unfortunately, large claims continue, continue to drive that line item. So, at this point, we are running a little unfavorable to the annual budget. We continue to, you know, look at that and monitor what's going on, and, and hope we, you know, it starts to swing the other way the last eight months of the year. So, we will just continue to monitor, monitor that line item. On the dashboard that you do have, there are a few line items that are noted in red that are highlighted for you, from National School Lunch to Medicaid on the revenue side. But those are both running either consistent with prior year or a little favorable to prior year, Medicaid being one of those. We're having a pretty good year so far on the Medicaid side, which is, which is good news. I'll probably talk about Medicaid in my fiscal update here in a second. On the expenditure side, we have tuition reimbursement, the only one that's lagging, or should say it's at 50% of budget four months for the year, but that is also consistent with prior year and how we, how we expend those funds throughout the year. So, I have no concerns on that line item as well. So, other than that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have on the executive summary report.
All right, no questions. Mr. Fleck, do you...
On the insurance, this is, seems to be fairly consistent each month that we're dealing with large claims, and that does happen. Do you have any kind of forecast of what this is going to look like going forward?
You know, you know, I've always wanted to reach out to Blue Cross Blue Shield and see if they'll provide a service, or at least an underwriting service, to forecast based on what they're currently seeing, what we can expect to see for the rest of the year based on those large claims in the pipeline. Unfortunately, because of HIPAA, and because I don't have access to exactly what's going on with those large claims, we don't have that ability to do that. That would be a special request that we would have to make, and I, I mean, I think you bring up a pretty good point. You know, I'm going to go to my broker and see if that's even possible, but in the past, we have not been able to successfully obtain that information.
Okay, and it really would be for forecasting purposes only?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and it's really on the large claims, because that's truly what is driving 70%, 80% of the monthly expense are those large claims coming in the pipeline.
Okay. Thank you. That's all?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I just, just doing some real quick math on it, you know, there's 1,736 people covered under plan based on our budgeted, you know, it's almost $56, over $5,600 per person. You claim them.
Right. Yeah. And that's, that's why I say the major, you know, I think prior year, 40 to 40, 40 to 50 individuals accounted for 70% of the total health insurance expense of what you're seeing here on an annual basis. That's how much large claims drive, affect these numbers.
Thank you for that. We'll move on to nine dot two, monthly fiscal reports. Mr. Altmeier, your update?
Yeah, just, just a few things, just a reminder that the final levy will be presented at the next board meeting. We began the process to roll over and look at the FY '21 budget and five-year plan, so we are planning to present that probably in the month of February, so we should have data pulled together to kind of roll that forward and start to present various scenarios at that time. The team is working on year-on-tax documents. We are looking into, we do have some vans within our transportation department that are in need of replacement, so we are going to be looking at doing, replacing a few of those vans, maybe even adding a few transportation vans for our special ed students that need those services. And we will be utilizing the state contract, so I did want to just make the board aware of that, and we will be bringing that forward in a future board meeting once we get our arms around exactly what we need. Lastly, I do have a bullet point there on Medicaid, and one of my staff, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, one of my staff had an opportunity to go to a national Medicaid conference, and there's something that is called free care for claiming of Medicaid. And free care for Medicaid is, as a school district, we collect Medicaid on Medicaid eligible students that have an IEP. But we provide a lot of services to Medicaid-eligible students that, well, they don't have IEPs, right? Whether it's social work, whether it's crisis situations, OTPT, there's a lot of things that we do for Medicaid-eligible students for which today we don't have an opportunity to collect Medicaid. Well, the federal government does allow collecting of Medicaid on Medicaid, every Medicaid-eligible student, but our state, the state of Illinois, would have to pass an amendment to their current Medicaid policy, and it's a pretty simple amendment. And right now, I believe 13, 13 states have passed that amendment and are moving forward at collecting Medicaid on all Medicaid-eligible students. So we are working with HFS as well as legislators down in Illinois to make sure that, A, they're aware of this, and I'm going to be working with Illinois ASBO and the Alliance to make sure we're pushing for this, because this could be a 10 to maybe 15% increase in Medicaid collections, so that may be $70,000 to $100,000 in annual revenue. So again, we're just crossing our Ts, dotting our Is, we're doing everything we can to kind of push the legislators down in Springfield to help us get this moving along, because HFS, as I understand it, Health and Family Services, they're really the agency and department that has to drive this and move this forward. If they don't move it forward, working with Senator Staines, she's kind of the Medicaid expert down in Springfield, she said she would be willing to, well, we could just pass legislation that would force HFS to do it, but let's see if we can get HFS to do it with the Alliance and Illinois ASBO, and maybe a lot of CFOs and CSPOs from school districts kind of pushing on them to get it done. So that's what our intent and plan is going to be over the next several months, is to see if we can get HFS to move on that. So, just wanted to make the board aware of that potential opportunity. Again, just trying to drive legislation to help school districts here in Illinois, so just want to give the board an update.
Why would they be reluctant? What, does there strings attached to...
No, there's no, there's no additional cost to the state of Illinois.
So what's the problem?
Yeah, I don't know. It's a good question. As far as I know, from what I've learned and from, from reading, as much as I've read on this free care and this, this, this amendment that the state would need to pass, there are no strings attached. And it's a, no, it's, in fact, the state would probably gain a little more money, because as I also understand it, it's not a 100% pass-through from the federal government to the state to us. The state actually keeps a portion of what the federal government is sending. So, the state might actually win by passing this amendment, but that's a whole nother issue.
Right. Okay.
That's a whole nother piece of legislation that I would love to pass, because if hospitals right down the street are able to collect 100% of the Medicaid that... that they're claiming, why can't school districts also collect one-hundred percent? Because what we've been told is school districts today are only collecting maybe fifty percent of what the hospital right down the road is collecting for the same type of service. So that's a whole nother, that's a bigger issue that we need to jump into and understand.
Anything further? Altmeier on that?
Nope, that's all I have.
Very good. We have our activity account balances. Any questions on that? Just move that forward, okay. Nine dot three, we have our purchasers impressed, disbursements, and bills there. So any questions or concerns? All right, we'll move those forward to the board and we're on the building and grounds.
Thank you. Item ten dot one, own M updates. Mr. Runkowski, anything to highlight on this?
I'm a little disappointed that it's dark when you drive up here today because you'd see a lot of framing installed north of the building here. Our solar project is moving along kindly. It looks like they're going to be done driving piles out here real soon and move on to the other part of Square Barn Campus between Conley and McCave and way back behind the bus lot. And they have mobilized and started driving piles at Reed Road. They were delivered at the beginning of this week and work has started there as well. Material is expected to be delivered and work start at Harmony Campus over winter break. The only other thing I'd like to bring up in this report is I have shared with the board here the executive summary report of an energy audit that Nycor recently did of some of the facilities in School District one fifty-eight as part of our, being a part of the Smart Energy Management cohort this year. And very happy to say that they tell us in the meeting they had a hard time finding things for us to consider because we're doing a great job. They did find a couple of recommendations for us. You'll note that there are some things that the ROI is pretty big. It's because they're looking for things to put on the report. There is a couple that are considered to somewhat be low-hanging fruit. New perspective on some of the food service equipment and how to manage that a little better. We've had a nice meeting with our Food Service Director, Richard Reed, to review that. And we're considering moving forward on a low, a low, one-at-a-time basis, trying some of that work and also advise him of the opportunities that exist when it's time to replace equipment savings can be acquired there. That's all I have to say unless there's questions.
Yeah, any questions from the board or committee? All right, thank you for that report. Item ten dot two, Rooftop Unit Replacement, bid two thousand nineteen dash thirty-eight.
This is part of our capital projects list for this year. We had a very good bidding climate on this one, as you can see, quite a few bids. When we walked out of the bid opening, I was a little skeptical that it could be done for that price based on the other numbers received. Representative Wold and I did interview the contractor. We find he says he's got everything taken care of in his bid. He's got the equipment we were putting as our base spec as the particular brand, so we have no reason not to recommend them. Wold checked the references and found they were fine, and they have a very long list of references. So we have no reason not to recommend the word at that bid.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee?
What was our expected price?
Two hundred and sixty, and that was based on our experience doing this at Conley with the same equipment a couple of years ago. The difference was that when we did Conley, we bundled it with also replacing a chiller. And we did not do that this time, so there must be some economies of scale there, I suspect.
Any objections with moving this forward then? Okay, we'll go ahead and move that ahead to the board. Item ten dot three, Fine Arts Construction Update.
Well, if you have driven by there lately, you'll see there are a few more masonry walls up, starting to look like something there. A brick veneer will go on probably in the spring, so that's not the finish you're going to see when it's done. But I'm very pleased with the progress we've made. The scary start to winter seemed to subside enough that we could make some progress there. Contractors were able to, very minimal cost and winter conditions, they may be, the projection is that by the end of the next week that they will absorb the allowance in that contractor's bid of expenditure. And Lamp is going to contribute some of their general conditions expense. They have invested some of their manpower to try to help keep in this move along, I recognize that. But all things considered, if, fingers crossed, we should be getting near the point where we can receive steel and have it installed on the roof without any real big extraordinary expense, it might seem. We just have to hope the weather holds.
Yeah, it's supposed to.
And the only other thing I'd like to bring to your attention here is something new that I put in here, page three of the report. I thought it would behoove us to keep the board apprised of pending minor changes that are being discussed. And there will be some expenses presented to the board. There's a few numbers listed on page three here in this spreadsheet of what some of those pending changes in cost are going to be. And there are some other ones that there are not because negotiation is ensuing aggressively between the contractors and Lamp. And Wold reviewed on the cost to see if they're reasonable. But I would ask if, Wold, we have Roger and Kirsty here, I think, believe today, if one or both of them would mind coming up to explain a little bit about what these things are, I'd be most appreciative.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm going to go out talking because she's a bit of a...
Oh, no.
So she'll just bump me if she, yeah. All right, let's just, I'll kind of go through some of these, look at the numbers to the left, I'll start with those. Item two and item eight are related, they're interconnected because they're both unforeseen conditions of an existing roof drain line that came out that wasn't shown on existing drawings or anything like that, so we had to deal with it. Both the footing modification and the relocate of the cleanout. So item two and item eight are both related. Obviously, as Doug said, we're looking still, reviewing that cost under item eight to make sure it's still a fair price for the work being performed. Looking then at item oh, oh, three and three A, again, those were soil conditions that were found unforeseen. In, obviously, you know, we take soil borings, we took one in the middle of each section and didn't show the area that was close to the building where there was additional black top soil that needed to be removed and replaced with CA six, which is basically rock. So that was, again, an unforeseen condition. We're still basically trying to verify the exact quantity of material removed so that we get, again, a good fair price for the work that's being done to replace the bad soil with the CA six. Item four is masonry changes that Doug just talked about. Again, those are staying in check based on the nice weather. Zero zero five is something that we're looking at. There are certain areas of the wall that actually are going to be below grade. And if you remember, the base, the high school has that court, or not court, rough-faced block. We want to switch it to a smooth base so we can put a waterproofing membrane or material on the face of that block efficiently. So again, we're getting costs on that, we're reviewing all those costs. And again, once we get all these costs, we'll bring them back to the board for your review. Item number six is some steel changes at the South Vestibule. This is basically, when we were designing that vestibule, we were looking at ways to save money. We decided to keep some of it. We were actually keeping one of the columns that was internal. We were looking to move it externally, in essence. Our structural engineer missed the fact that it wasn't a continuous column. It basically was a column that had a structural complice coming off of it and built then above it versus one continuous column. So we looked at ways to solve that issue, again, because our structural engineer didn't pick it up that we were going to keep that column. And so we're finding ways versus taking out the whole thing, shoring it up, we're looking at ways to basically use the columns there and basically reinforce that section in the middle. Again, that price is, we negotiated, we talked, we, they basically, it was like a, they gave us a cost before they saw exactly what they needed to do. Once we talked them through it, they saw the actual condition. It was, it's down like sixty-five hundred, something like that, fifty, you know, sixty-eight, seven, something like that. So that cost will be lower on this review. Item number seven and...
Isn't there more to that, though? That whole vestibule, the central business?
Yeah, but that's, that's, again, we don't have, we have some preliminary costs on that, that's not on this list, that's just the steel column itself. I'll talk about that in a second. The cost associated with oh, seven and seven A, again, was, there was a, there's an overhead door, a ten-foot overhead door that we need to go in place. Again, once we started on our construction and got to the shop drawings of the door, we had conflicting information. The door needed to be ten feet wide. Unfortunately, when we were putting the drawings together, for some reason, the drawing device that we used or the tool we used changed the dimension on one of the sheets. So we feel that, again, as you know and working with us, our policy is you should only pay for something once. If we have to correct something that was our mistake, you know, we should have to pay for that. So that nine hundred and forty-five dollars, in essence, was additional work because of that error in our, in our drawing. So that will be figured out how to compensate the district back for that bit. The door itself was no cost, that's the way it was meant to be, so. And those are the, those are the items on this list. The first one I didn't cover because you talked about it, I think, in a previous, previous meeting, so. You didn't? Oh, okay. Going back to number one then, we need to add some fire suppression heads in the black box in the technology room and the, what's this, the lighting control room, IT room. They were not shown on the drawings, so we needed to add sprinkler heads in those two rooms.
Those are the items. I'll take questions on the items on the list first, if you have any.
No, I'm okay, but thank you for the detailed explanation. Any questions from the committee or the board?
I think I, I think I have one question. Can you go back to the, to the column that?
Yeah.
I think I got a little lost.
Okay.
Okay, so there's a column that was intended to be removed or, no?
Go ahead and ask your question.
Well, why don't you just re-explain it? Maybe I'll have a question, maybe I won't, so.
When we were designing, again, we know we had cost issues, we were looking at a simple way of redesigning the existing vestibule area and that we're adding onto. Yeah, why don't you try?
So originally, we were, we were trying to, we were taking out the entire south vestibule, the low canopy as well as the high canopy. The further the design went along, the more we realized that digging into all that, the cost was just kind of growing exponentially. And we needed to figure out a better way to make this whole canopy kind of look and have feel of what that original really tall volume had from the first design. And so we decided we could do that with leaving the higher canopy roof in place and kind of building up under to it. So all we needed to do now was remove the lower canopy. And that allowed us to reuse the two columns that are there existing because they will now be inside buildings.
I'll take over. So this existing column then, where our structural engineer missed, again, we, as, all the columns in the building, as you know, most of them are just straight, round columns that go all the way down to the ground, even at the vestibule before we did any work.
So that actual steel column was not built as one straight column. Again, our structural engineer didn't look close enough at the existing drawings to note that it was actually built as two pieces. And so now, basically, as we've taken off that canopy and exposed it, now we have to deal with, we've got a top column and a bottom column and a steel beam, if you will, that goes to the center. So that will now be exposed and you don't, you've got to make it look nice, if you will. So we looked at ways of, do we just take that whole column out and replace it with a new one? Again, that didn't seem cost-effective because we'd have to shore up the existing structure, getting, yeah. So we looked at, is there a way that we could use the column, create a collar at that area where it's going to be, stay and remain? And that's kind of the direction we're going.
Then I don't have a question because you made it perfectly clear, so thank you. Sorry you had to talk.
But related, related to that, the one that isn't on here yet that we just, we're starting to get to or will have reviewing cost is that canopy itself around there. Again, our structural engineer or mechanical consultants didn't include the removal of the steel and some of the piping that's in that location. Obviously, we, the architect, we had noted to remove all the material, the metal and things like that. But there was nothing on our documents that said you need to remove this steel and you need to remove this piping. So now, again, we're looking to have them say, well, it wasn't on the drawings, so you didn't bid it, so now we need a cost for you to do that. So we've received some preliminary costs, we're looking at, again, reviewing that. We don't have the backup yet, so we want to see that before we say anything. But then also, they agreed that whatever we come down to, they're probably going to do it on a time-material basis, which is, again, the exact cost that it would take to do the work.
So that's something that has not made it to the sheet yet?
Correct.
Okay.
You'll see it next month.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Got questions? All right.
Kirsty, want to say anything else?
Thank you, Roger and Kirsty.
Thank you very much. All right, that's it for the construction updates. Item ten dot four, the ProCom Service Agreement.
Well, the, I'm going to turn this one over to Mr. Adam Dean to talk about the Keyless Entry Project, which is at completion time and it's time to turn it over into a different kind of thing that we need to do to maintain it.
Good evening. You have in front of you for your review the three-year service agreement we have with, that we would like to have with ProCom stemming from our Keyless Entry Enhancement that we have come to completion. Now it's time to maintain the product. Kind of some of the highlights in this agreement is that there will be one annual inspection through the next three years of all the hardware and the product that was put in. With the three-year maintenance agreement, the reasoning behind the three-year was because we put it in our initial bid in hopes of a better quality product and quality installation. Another thing to note is this covers the maintenance repair, replacement of equipment, parts, components to restore it to its proper working self. And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions, but those are the highlights of the agreement. Doug, if you have anything else you'd like to add?
I made the suggestion that we, that we put, when we do systems like this that are digitally complex systems, that we put a service agreement attached to the bid to give, put the burden on the contractor to do a good job of installation and commissioning a quality installation so that we can avoid problems down the road. And this is just a follow-through to deliver that after the bidding.
Thank you. Questions from the committee? Or the, or the board? Okay, any objections with moving this forward then? All right, we'll go ahead and move that forward. Thank you very much for the update. Thank you. Board of legislators?
Okay. Real briefly, the, the veto session is, was wrapped up right before the III Conference and they're adjourned until, what, end of January? Okay. January twenty-eighth.
Except for the Senate goes back on the nineteenth to vote for their new Senate President because President Colton retired.
Right, he did announce that he is retiring in January, so any word on who that might be? Okay. I guess we'll all find out. But there are, there was some bills that were approved by both houses that have come through. The one that was talked about at the III Conference was Senate Bill seventeen eighty-four, which has to do with the Janus Decision regarding how communication can be made regarding an employee's rights in the union, and that's, that's all I'll say about that. All these are, have been sent to the governor for his signature. I don't think any of them have passed yet, I think.
He did sign the paraprofessional law today, which was, which is a good correction to, to the elimination of the basic skills test that actually took away...
to, um, to the elimination of the basic skills test that actually took away an avenue for, for, uh, for people to earn their paraprofessional license and making it more difficult, uh, for the, the pool of people to be paraprofessionals. So that was a very positive thing for workforce development.
That was Senate Bill ten, so, okay. That's the only one I've, uh, that I understand, so I didn't even know that was signed today, so. Okay, uh, other than that, um, I have nothing else. So that's the end of Legislative. Is there anybody on the committee that has anything to say? Okay. Uh, moving on to me, for the Board of Education, and this is the, this is what we did on our summer vacation time. Uh, we're going to talk about our, uh, experience at the Joint Annual Conference, and I am going to let everybody, uh, talk about their experience, and I guess I'll start with Ms. Melendi.
Thank you. Um, I went to a lot of, of sessions, but, um, that my two, my two, uh, favorite ones were, um, uh, that looked at, uh, meetings, agendas, and how you run your board meetings. And so, um, it did two things. It kind of reinforced that we are doing most everything correctly, and, and the examples they gave are exactly how we run our board meetings. But there are a couple of things that maybe we can do to, um, make us a little more effective. But overall, that was, um, I thought that was very interesting. But the one I'm really excited about, and I think we all went to this, was, um, the Happiness Advantage Workshop, and, and the educators probably have heard of, of this, too, and, and it's about, um, and I think this ties in well to our social emotional learning. Um, it's linking, um, positivity to performance. So basically, what it is, is the way they explained it was, you know, there's a, um, there's a graph, and most people are on, on the graph and their behavior and their attitude, and, and then there's an outlier, that, that person that we all know at work that, you know, is, is, if they're in a good mood or if they say something nice, you know, the coworkers say something like, you know, "You're a brown-noser," or "What's wrong with you today?" And the message was, we should all be like that outlier. And so the more positivity we have, the more it affects our performance, and it's, it's a trickle-down effect. So it starts with our leadership and trickles down to the students, and I think it's a nice tie-in to our social emotional learning. So, um, I would love to look at this further, and if anybody has anything to add. But I, I got a lot out of this, and, and I, I really would like to, to look at this. That's all I have.
Who would like to go next? Mr. Troy?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. Um, so I also had an action-packed adventure. Um, I was one of the people who took in the Happiness Advantage presentation as well, um, and I snagged some of the material for Dr. Rowe, um, who was already aware of some of this. I also walked away very energized by the presentation. Um, but even more so was the superintendent from the Schaumburg School District, who presented how they have put this into, uh, into play in their school district for elementary kids. And they have seen, um, some very positive changes go about for that school district in general, and that, that reinforced the, the approach and, and, uh, what kind of effect that can have on the kids. So that, that was, I, I was also very moved by that and encouraged by that, uh, and would like to see our district take a hard look at that. Um, the, uh, the second workshop that I attended had to do with attention, um, and, uh, and different things that, that people do in order to get attention. It wasn't meant in a negative way, it was meant in a very positive way. And, uh, and the presenter did a fabulous job of illustrating over thirty different ways to get attention focused on you or to follow different things that presenters do to keep attention, um, engaged. Uh, very, very good workshop. I, I really appreciated that. Um, I, I attended two of the keynote speakers. Um, one that stood out was actually the second one on Saturday. It's a former, um, Chicago Bears player who, I had to go and look him up because I didn't recognize the name. Um, he's now a, a motivational speaker, and the reason that he was very hard to find was because he only played in one game. Um, he played in one preseason game, and he got injured on one play and, uh, and never played again. And he described his path to get to that point in life, to reach his goal of playing in an NFL game only to have it snatched away. Um, he came from a very heavy drug-laden background, and so he managed to turn his entire life around, and his entire crux of his presentation had to do with culture. And, uh, and, and I found his speech to be, uh, fantastically and wildly motivational, so, and inspiring. Um, so that was a, a hats off to him as well. Um, I attended the, uh, the District One-Fifty-Eight Energy Presentation, um, answered questions for several other board members, uh, who sat near me and, and had questions about what kind of things that we were doing, uh, with the solar panel project that we're, we're engaged in. Um, I attended a workshop, uh, or session on IMRF, because I have no idea about IMRF. And so this was an opportunity for me to learn about the, um, that particular retirement fund for municipal and, and state employees, um, as well as school district employees. I also attended the delegate assembly of the twelve new resolutions that we had talked and discussed and bantered about. Uh, seven of them were actually pulled off of the consent agenda, and they were voted on and discussed individually. Um, no real surprises there, uh, as far as what was passed and what wasn't. Um, I voted the way that we all had discussed and, and followed through on that. Um, the one that gained quite a bit of, of publicity actually had to do, just as we had engaged in our conversation here, um, regarding, uh, arming of, of, uh, teachers, um, in the classroom with concealed weapons. Um, that did not pass through the delegate assembly, so, um, it's going to be a wait until next year, because I, I suspect that another district will bring that back and fine-tune it and, and try and, uh, and, and provide the, the verbiage on there to make it palatable for more districts to pass. Uh, and then I also, on Sunday morning, I attended a, uh, a workshop that had to do pretty much with Luda districts. Um, usually, in past conferences, I've attended, uh, like a president's roundtable on Sunday morning. Uh, on this particular year, they had one that was more geared towards large unit districts, um, and there were about eighteen different districts that were represented in that discussion. It lasted about an hour and fifteen minutes. Um, districts from all over the state that were, that are considered large unit. Um, I wasn't sure where we were size-wise, but, uh, we were right in the middle somewhere. Um, there was, uh, the largest one was actually Champaign, uh, School District Downstate. So it was just a, a sharing of information, um, kind of questions that people had in their particular district and, and how, uh, how leaders in like districts were, were dealing with these things. So that is how I spent my weekend. Thank you.
I'll be much more briefer. Um, the, uh, of course, the best thing I attended was our, uh, presentation by, uh, Dr. Rowe, Mr. Altmeier, and Mr. Renkezic. Um, that was by far the best session on our energy savings, and it was, uh, you know, it was a good experience. Uh, we did, you know, I know, Paul, you had some people come up to you. We had some people come up to us, talk about it, so that was, uh, enjoyable. I, I actually, uh, went to a couple of sessions related to, uh, current developments in collective bargaining. Actually had one of the best speakers I've ever had going all these many years to the, these sessions. I was an attorney, I thought he was outstanding, as attorneys go. Not to disparage, not to disparage the lot, but, uh, yeah. Not to disparage the, the, the whole lot of you, but, uh, yeah, that, that was, enjoyed that, contrasting that with, uh, some legislative update by some of, uh, some legislators, which was one of the worst sessions I've ever been to in my life, um, which almost put me down for the count. Um, so, um, the, in addition to that, I spent some time reviewing the district's finances and then reviewing, uh, prior audits and, and the current budget, so that's what it predominantly is.
So this was my first III conference, and I was like a kid in a candy store when I saw all the different sessions that there were. I was like, "I want to go here, and I want to go there," and they were overlapping, and I really had to make decisions with that, and, um, I focused a lot on new school board member training, um, understanding your role, uh, the different hats that you wear as, you know, parent, friend, school board member, how to juggle some of those, um, you know, problems that arise. Um, a real common theme, you know, is always communicating with your superintendent. No surprises. You have to trust your superintendent, um, who you've hired, um, to do his job, and, uh, don't allow any surprises to come his way. Um, in meeting other board members, new board members, um, I was, again, um, I guess it was reconfirmed, for lack of a better word, um, how well our board works together. Um, I'm very lucky to be on a board that works, uh, as well as we do because there's a few other boards that just do not run as smoothly, um, as ours does. So I, I commend the board, um, for the, the effort that they put in to work well together. Um, I also went to, um, some training on, on school security, um, talking about school safety. Um, I'm looking forward to, you know, our threat assessment procedure that's going to be coming out. Um, common themes amongst the safety seminars were how important it is to really develop relationships with the kids. Let the kids teach you and tell you about things that we really don't want to know about. They have to establish, uh, uh, or know that they can talk to you, that they're not just talking to some, you know, principal or that they're talking to somebody real that's going to understand and listen to what they're bringing, and then taking in the patterns that you may hear, because sometimes our best teachers in that situation are the kids because they live in that world every day. So to really take to heart what they have to say. Um, and, uh, I did also pop into, uh, the delegate assembly just to kind of learn a little bit and hear, um, how that process worked. And so we had our votes there. Um, it was interesting to hear some of the, the debates. There were a lot of valid points that, uh, other school board members were bringing, um, trying to debate their case. I was a little bit confused because I thought it was a little bit backwards because most boards have already then made their decision as to how their district is going to vote. Um, but there, you know, maybe if ahead of time, and there was some of that discussion, so you could factor in what other school districts are going through and allowing them to make those decisions that work well and trusting them to make decisions for their own district. Um, but it was a jam-packed weekend for me. Um, I was running, there were days I didn't eat. Next year, I will be bringing, like, a peanut butter and jelly sandwich with me so that I can eat in between, because really I was, um, I was very excited to go to a lot of different sessions, so, uh, I'm grateful for the opportunity.
Thanks. Okay, um, I think this is my sixth conference or so. I, this is like the highlight of the year for me, uh, as far as the school board goes. I love going down there. I love going down there with this group because we kind of get to show off what we got going here, um, to the other districts. We are definitely a, a high-functioning district, a high-functioning board. Everybody is on the same page, and it shows. Um, and that's kind of fun to go down there and, and, uh, have people talk to us about what we're doing and how, how we're making things work so well. Um, especially some of our local, uh, districts, uh, fellow board members are, are talking to us and saying, "What are you guys doing about this? What are you doing about that?" They're looking to us to, so that they can take some of that back, uh, to them. And, uh, I'm very proud of that fact. Um, it's been many, many years to get to this point, and, um, and we're very fortunate to have a district that's, that's running as smoothly as it is, and it is hard work, uh, to keep going forward with that. Um, I did attend, um, I try and get down, speaking of lawyers, uh, to the, uh, to the legal update. Um, this is put on by two great attorneys, Lynn Heims and, um, Rob Cooper. And they are, and this is their words, not mine, but they are like the two old guys in the balcony from the Muppet Show. They're the hecklers, they're great, they're funny. If, you know, you can take a pretty dry topic and make it engaging. They pack the house, and they, they do a good job of explaining what's going on, um, with, with cases, with bills, um, and what to expect, um, uh, so that you know what's coming down the pike and what you have to deal with, uh, for budgets and compliance and, and all sorts of things. So that's, that's always good and fun. And that is, uh, one side of the spectrum. The other one was on pensions. I try and go to a pensions, um, uh, presentation every year, and it's, it's like a broken record. It's the same thing. Um, they, all they do is tell us how pensions work. Well, we know that, and they tell us that it's, the system's busted, and they don't know what to do about it. And I've heard that now for six years, so, um, I'm going to keep going. Hopefully, somebody will have something to say, and I, I, I don't fault the presenters. I, I just think that no, nobody down there really has an answer to this very, very large question that is going to hit us, and it's going to hit us hard, uh, in some fashion. Um, the, uh, the, the other thing is, um, is just being able to spend time, um, not on this dais, but spending time together, um, with the administration, um, with, with the other fellow board members in a setting that, uh, that we can just bond, and, and I really like that part of it, too. Uh, Paul, I want to thank you for being a delegate, um, and going to that. And I, you know, you're, you're motivational speaker. He sounds like, um, Moonlight Graham from, uh, uh, yeah, uh, that baseball movie, which is like one of my, thank you, Field of Dreams. It's one of my favorites. I couldn't think of it. But he played, you know, one game, one play, and gets injured, so, um, but yeah. Uh, and, and the, really, the best session I went to was our own session, but I don't want to steal anybody's thunder on that, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Rowe.
Well, maybe to, maybe you should, because you're surprised I'm not going to speak about our session. I know it's been, it's been covered. We were very fortunate and happy to, to share some of our energy story with a number of people around the, uh, at the conference from around the state. A lot of great questions and people interested in how they can follow in our footsteps and save, uh, some, turn their, focus their money on learning and not burning, as Mr. Young's song is coined. Um, but the point that I wanted to make is, is, obviously, the school board conference, but it's also, uh, the try is, is Illinois Association of School Administrators, Illinois Association of School Boards, Illinois Association of School Business Officials. So there's, uh, it's, it's really an all-encompassing conference that, um, that allows us all to learn together. And what's, what's, what's wonderful about it is, is our school board's approach and their dedication to continually learning and, and honing the craft as being great board members. Um, there aren't many school districts who bring the full contingency of school boards to the conference because people, people's schedules or whatever. Um, so I, I just wanted to share my appreciation for our school board continually making this a priority, uh, to enhance their learning, because you have to remember, this is a voluntary position that people run for and are elected for. There's no compensation, um, and a lot of times, there's very little appreciation for all the time and effort and energy that goes into, um, helping guide the district and ensure that we're, we're aligning our practices with the community priorities. So with that, dedicating a, a weekend ahead of a, one of the major holidays, uh, when there are a lot of things, shopping, for instance, um, could be done, uh, but instead, they, they bunk, hunker down in a, in a hotel and learn, uh, and learn about, about what we do so they can, they can serve our community well, and that's, that's appreciated, and it's, it's more unique than you might imagine.
Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on, twelve point two, we have, uh, minutes from the committee as a whole from November seventh, uh, or, and, um, regular meeting from November fourteenth. Is there any questions or comments on that or revisions? Anybody have a problem with moving that forward? Okay. All right, and then, uh, with that, I think it's seven-ten. I will make a motion to go into closed session for the items listed in the agenda. Is there a second? Second from Mr. Troy. We need a roll call vote.
Mr. Gentry? Mr. Guerin? Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes. Okay, we are in closed session. Thank you very much.